Good evening and welcome. Our meeting will now come to water. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for a moment of silence for our men and women, women in military at home and abroad, for our police and firefighters who protect us here in our own community, for the people who were first responders as long as from one year ago, and for those who actually had to wrestle with the COVID-19. I think that especially with the first responders, they were very, very brave. Please be seated. We're going to return to a discussion that we have previously had, and it comes from the Board of Assessment Review. The Board of Assessment Review held grievance night on February 23rd, 2021, and determined that many grievants failed to provide any information or provided insufficient information to permit the board to make proper determination that their assessments were illegal, erroneous, or unequal. Illegal was the first word. The meeting was adjourned until March 11th, 2021, to allow those grievants who did not supply relevant information an opportunity to do so if they chose to. The following grievance are not entitled to any reduction of their assessments. Do I have a motion to find that the aforementioned applicants had provided insufficient information for the Board of Review to make a determination that such assessments are illegal, erroneous, or unequal, and therefore pursuant to Section 5252A of the real property tax law? The aforementioned applicants are not entitled to any reduction of their assessments. Trustee McRinos? And the second please? Trustee Hoyer? And all of those in favor? And that was unanimous.
Mayor, for the purposes of the record, that concerned the property owners Baladi at 12 Osborne Road, Alba at 52 Pine Street, Arlia at 161 Locust Street, Fuentes at 82 Meadow Street, Young at 36 Brompton Road, Geltert at 142 Meadow Street, Kathandaram at 14 Linden Street, and Nazmi at 301 Stewart Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on counsel.
At the grievance night hearing of the Board of Assessment Review held on February 23rd, the Board found that several grievance for real property tax assessment reductions provided sufficient information to permit the Board to make proper determinations that their assessments were illegal, erroneous, or unequal. The following grievance have provided sufficient information to support the reduction of their assessments as set forth below. Property owner Hendrickson at 34 Colonial Avenue, going from a current assessed valuation to a new assessed valuation of $12,200. Property owner Lombardo at 5 Maryland Avenue, from a current $14,000 to a new $13,250. Property owner Siolamizian at 174 Garden Street, from a current $13,662 to a new assessed valuation of $13,400. Property owner Marcelos at 171 Garden Street, from an assessed valuation of $16,000 to a new value of $13,775. Property owner Corbett at 208 Meadbrook Road, from $22,695 to $17,000. And the Diocese of Long Island at 59 Third Street, from an assessed valuation of $27,750 is now wholly exempt.
Do I have a motion to find that the aforementioned applicants have provided sufficient information? And that the Board has determined that the aforementioned grievances are hereby granted and that their assessments be reduced in the aforementioned amounts for the 2021-22 assessment rule? Trustee Menudo? And a second please? How about trustee McRinos? And all of those in favor, please say aye. And that passed unanimously. Now I will make the motion to adjourn this meeting. And may I have a first trustee Delaney and a second trustee Foley and all in favor? Aye. And that passed unanimously. Now we'll return to our agenda. And we will move, we will invite two volunteer firefighters, Mitchell P. Delancy and Christopher Gorski. If you are present, please stand.
May we only have one of the members, Chris Gorski, here tonight? I'll start with the member that's here. Chris Gorski grew up in, still resides in Garden City. He's a graduate from Loyola University and now works as a computer scientist for the Department of Justice. He looks forward to helping our community. The second candidate for your approval could not be here tonight, and I'll explain it a little bit. Mitch Delaney, I'm not sure if he's related to--
He's not related.
--trustee Delaney. Mitch grew up in New Jersey where he served on both the Mountain Lakes Volunteer Fire Department and the Bhutan Township Fire Department for five, seven years. He was an active member of the department and only took time off while attending Loyola University of Maryland. Following graduation, he began work in New York City and eventually moved there prompting an exit from the volunteer fire service. Mitch recently moved to Garden City and reached out to the department about resuming his involvement in fire service. He's looking forward to serving his community once again. Mitch is quarantined unfortunately for COVID-19 exposure and cannot be here tonight. So those are two volunteers we're looking for approval tonight. Thank you.
Very nice. We are very glad to have you. Congratulations.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering.
You can stay or you can go. You go for your--
Take care.
And now we will turn to Congresswoman Portman Head and the Village Administrator. And first we will go to Steven.
No.
We were doing--
No.
Not for firefighters, no?
No. He doesn't-- Steven Braun.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here for Commissioner Jackson, who is regretfully absent due to being at a Board of Governors meeting of the New York State Chiefs of Police.
Mr. Braun, if you could hold the microphone closer to--
The deputy ambassador--
Here for Commissioner Jackson, who regretfully is at the Board of Governors meeting of the New York State Chiefs of Police, who serves as a regional representative. He did, we have nothing on the agenda tonight, but he did request that I recap a recent news release put out by the Garden City FD regarding a scam that's going around. It's a telephone scam where you receive a recorded message stating that it's either Amazon or Apple. They'll state that something wrong with your account. Your account may have been breached, might not on. Thank you very much. And these scenarios, again, Amazon or Apple, the recorded message will state that it's Amazon or Apple calling you, stating there's something wrong with your account or there's some suspicious activity or your account's been breached. It's not true. The scammers will say to press one to speak with the representative or give you a phone number to call to get more information. In fact, they're trying to steal your personal information. In any of these cases, you should certainly hang up and not give information to anyone you're not sure of. If you have any belief that there may be an actual problem with any account of yours, contact the company through their own website or number that you can verify. You can also report these incidences to the FTC. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Javon Yello, are you here on Zoom?
I'm on Zoom, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight, but we will happily answer any questions the Board may have.
All right. I don't think there are any questions to speak now. All right, let's see, going on, I'll come down to Chief Cristo.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have nothing on the agenda and don't put any questions the Board may have.
Thank you. Irene Wu is not here today.
She's on the--
On Zoom?
Yep.
Irene Wu, is there anything that you want to discuss?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. On tonight's agenda, there are two items, transfer funds, and Mr. Swazi will talk about those. I have nothing else on the agenda.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Swazi. First will you cover Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 on the agenda is a request to ratify an emergency declaration for emergency repairs for the flat roof at St. Paul's. It was a dangerous condition. He put up barricades. Mr. Beal met there with Westor. It was estimated they could repair the roof Saturday morning for $6,000, so we selected that vendor, they're familiar with the site, and worked since to ratify both the emergency declaration and the emergency awarding to that vendor.
So it's important to note that we don't, we're not right at this time redoing the roof. We're bringing it up to an acceptable standard.
Yeah, the roof, the roof actually peeled away. It opened up--
It was scary in the weather, correct?
Yes.
It was so wet.
We blew it open. It was a very, but instead of shingles coming off, entire sections came off. We have photographs to show you, they were sent around, but it was a dangerous situation. So it was rectified immediately.
All right, then, thank you very much. And is there someone else that you were going to speak for this evening? Or did you have reported your own?
Yes, unlike most of the other departments, I have plenty on the agenda this evening. We'll start with the transfer of funds. There are two transfers this evening. One is a fabricated cap that had go on a three-by-three abandoned chimney at the central garage. That was $1,600. Item D was for the annual inspection of the fire extinguisher that was DPWR. The account was short of funds, so we transferred the, this transfer is to pay that in the hole. Item number two is a change order for curb sidewalk and road improvements contract for 2020-21 catch basins. The value of this is about $50,000. This requested to prove a change order by roadwork ahead. This is the competitively bid contractor we awarded our road paving contract to. In doing some work for drainage at St. James South, we tried to put some catch basins in, but because of the utility congestion under the road, there are certain distances you have to maintain between utilities. We couldn't fit our standard 10-foot diameter catch basins in there. So this is just to, a change order is to allow students four-foot diameter catch basins. So instead of putting two in, which is 20 feet diameter, we'll put five four-foot diameter ones in to make up the capacity. I've also talked to the engineer and future contracts. He'll be adding specifications for multiple diameter catch basins. So if this ever occurs again, we'll have it in the original dispatch. We're wanting to come back to the Board for a change order. Item number three is again under the same contract for, this is for road patches. As you know, we're the, we're on the cusp of completing our water tower. To begin that project, we had to drain the tank and also shut off water. At the time, Caldwell hired Banker Construction to open up the road, replace the valves, and also create a new valve from the real lane, which was built after the original tank went in. And we had, we had no way of allowing to get water for shut the water tank valve off. So Banker did the original work. They patched the road and they came back to us because the county's been pressuring them to close the road permanently. Banker gave us an estimate of $92,000. I reached out to our engineer and asked him to get our competitively bid contractor, Roadwork Ahead. They looked at the patch and they came up with a cost of $48,000. So it's a $34,000 savings. The change order specifically to include specifications that are in the county contract that aren't in our normal contract here because we don't have the same specs. They're minor detail, but technically we want to make sure we did it by book. So this request is just to include those elements that are included in the proposal, like I said, to save the $34,000. Change order for the water tank replacement, Caldwell tanks, back in October or so of 2020. This item was removed at the request of the Board trustees for verification by the Elder Attorney's Office. That review has been completed. I would defer any specific questions to Mr. Be if there are any. Maybe even now or at the end of my comments. Item number five, engagement professional services H2M architects and engineers for discolored water complaints. The water department gets discolored water complaints, especially since the tank's been down. When the tank is online, the atmospheric pressure is maintained through the system through the tank. With the tank offline, the system is maintained system-wide by the booster pumps coming on and off as pressure shift. That causes a lot of fluctuations in the flow and starts upsetting it. I think that's the primary cause for the discoloration. But there are some historic spots in the village that I've talked to people about. Trustee Delaney talked to one and I spoke with him. So there's some, this is to help us strategize around it for a system-wide look at it and also target areas where I have complaints, over Brompton, Arthur Street, things like that. At $6,400. Item number six, professional services for H2M architects and engineers. This is for miscellaneous work regarding to water issues. So most of the time when we have H2M working for us, it's under a specific proposal, like the AOP treatments and the water complaint issue I just talked about. But there were times, especially recently, where I need to call on them to address water questions about the system that have nothing to do with the, with the project. So this is just to establish a rate schedule so that if I call upon them to do some administrative work to educate me or the Board or the residents that we have for this item going on by the Board. I put a dollar value of $12,000 on it, but I don't think we'll get nearly that much. I just assumed a thousand a month, but we probably won't use half of that. But it's not spent money. This is just sort of like a scheduled case on either. Number seven, engagement professional services H2M architects and engineers for preparation of a distribution system hydraulic model. So the water, the water system has undergone many changes over the last few years. New water mains, we have new water tank coming online. We have AOP systems coming online. We have all of our wellheads being rehabilitated. We have new development going on in the east end of the village. So this is really long overdue. It'll help with, it'll help with future upgrades. This hydraulic modeling will look at historical consumption, peak day flows, large users, pump curves, tank data, and assigns attributes to all these using a GIS modeling system. So, and they'll do, they'll do flow tests to calibrate the accuracy of the model. This is a $28,600 item. This will, this will commence shortly, but it will continue on through the completion of the tanks. They'll do before-tank and after-tank modeling. Number eight is acceptance of the maintenance bond for land tech. This is a requirements contract off the Nassau County contract. They did some work for us after the storm, but they ceased working for us. They didn't want to do all of the additional spot work we had around the village that was picked up by Valente. So this is just to close out the work they did and put a maintenance bond against it. Number nine is an access of easement agreement with the Garden City Golf Club. This is ratification agreement between the Artistic Golf Club and the village that allows our employees, contractors, their subcontractors, engineers, and our, anyone that involved the project to perform work on the golf club properly related to the implementation of the AOP's treatment facilities for wells eight and 12. I also want to report that the work commenced last week. It's progressing very nicely. The weather's been great. And they do plan on, they have to be off by April 1st. If the weather holds up, they'll be off soon, but we're, we're very confident. And I want to thank the construction team, PRI, the subcontractors, and the people at H2M that designed this. And we've covered number 10 already, Mayor. And the last item is information-only contracts and agreements. This is a contract of waters who hack, they perform semi-annual maintenance on the chlorine analyzer, pH probe, and nitrate analyzer. This is for calibration, monitoring twice a year, and emergency response when a problem is produced. That's all I have, Mayor. I'll take any questions.
That was quite a bit.
Yes, it is.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir. First of all, can you give us an update on the flagpole at St. Paul's?
Yes, the, first of all, I want to thank the fire department for attempting to replace the ropes up there. The ladder wasn't tall, the flagpole's about 120 feet tall. The ladder truck's about 90 feet. And even brought another department with a hundred-foot ladder to try, so thank you. Mr. Blake contracted with a private vendor and the flagpole's repaired. And I believe the flag has been on for the last three days now, two or three days.
By the way, I happened to drive by when they were repairing this. It is amazing to see because they go up about two-thirds of the way and then a gentleman actually climbs on the pole and he, he literally climbs up the pole to the very top to put the rope in. To see him do this was not to be believed. I just, it was amazing. The second, yeah. I was just unbelievable to see somebody do what he was doing.
Might be a training exercise for the fire department.
Well, that, that could be, that could be. The second thing is, is could you give us an update on Nassau Boulevard?
Yes, the Nassau Boulevard train station was completed many months ago, but because of delays on the factory where the lights produce, they only got delivered last week. They, they were waiting for the entire bunch to be ready. They were installed by the contractor for the job and collected, energized the circuit for the parking lines. Trustee Donnie noted that, he was there the other night, he lives nearby, noted that the flagpole lights, which we had added to the flagpole base there, were not functioning. Our engineer's in contact with them. They checked it out yesterday and that's rectified shortly. But it looks beautiful. And the walls, by the way, the next phase of that is the walls on the west and east end. Those walls have been designed. They are in the purchasing department. They should go out to bid by next Friday. They'll be out for three weeks. We assume that the project will commence sometime in latter part of May and be done during the summer.
And what about the parking lots on the south side?
The parking on the south side is part of the paving project that is beginning, is starting up again this Monday. So there's the asphalt field on the south side of the tracks will be covered under that program. It'll be done this, this, this summer.
All right, and then one last thing. I see that we have the area that's fenced in. Are we putting the dumpster back there? Or what was, what was there in that like square thing? Is it a dumpster that goes in there?
Oh, there's on the, on the west end of the lot on the south side of the entrance, there is a cutout for a dumpster of railroad users.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ralph, I have two questions.
Yes.
Do you have an update on, on the public works boilers?
Yes. Thank you, that's a good question. It's good news also. Thank you, Phil, Karen Altman, who handles the insurance claims verified yesterday. She heard from the insurance company. They will be covering the replacement or repair of the boiler. We've opted to replace it except for $10,000 of the duct tape and also the rental. So it looks like that's a nice break. And I have to provide you with the two invoice proposals. That's good news. Right now we have, it's operating normally. And thank you very much for acting on that so quickly last meeting.
Second question, what's going on with the stumps though? I still see a lot of stumps that haven't been taken out from the storm.
Okay, so, well, we actually had three electric lines down because of stump rining this week. So they were out there, you know, now that the snow has gone. The stump rining is continuing. Like I said, we had some electric outages around the block. Trustee Hoyer's aware of some of them. But it is, it is going on now. The ones that we can do in-house, we're doing. And we also have contractors with the storm-related ones. Also, there are about 18 storm-related repairs of sidewalks out of the original 83 that have commenced yesterday. They'll take about two to three weeks to complete.
Ralph? Delaney, back there. Is there an estimate as to when the water tower will be back in operation?
The estimate for the water tower has been for the last few months has been fall 2021. But I was on a phone call today with H2M engineers and with our environmental attorney, David Ullson. We are lifting the stop work order on the painting. And their, the US tank is going to commence. Yes, it was the first day where the ambient temperature was sufficient enough in the painting side. So, so we haven't lost any time. They've been authorized to work verbally. So things proceeding. I'm hopeful that it comes on in August, but it's going to miss the majority of the pumping season unfortunately, but by the fall it will be online. That's the current estimate. Thank you.
On the water tower, are they going to blast it before they paint it? Because there's rust on there.
Yes, on the inside, they sandblast it.
Right, exactly.
And then they coat it multiple times, I believe, two times. And the actual wells are getting coated a third time as part of the recent agreement. On the outside, they'll do the same thing, but they'll, that scaffolding seat, I believe, will have an internal net to keep the dust down and capture it.
That was my concern, okay.
All right, I think that covers everyone in the room. And so we are going to move along. And I'm going to ask if Mayor or any trustees have questions this evening.
Sure, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Thank you.
Sir, sir, last week we became aware of a nonpartisan organization that published the results of a report of 20 municipalities in New York State. Two of those were from Long Island, one, us and the neighborhood, which looked at the information the village provides to the public. The report focused on four items and arbitrarily assigned a rating, grading as follows. Posting of all 20 20 meeting minutes, 15 points. Posting of agendas for February of 2021, 35 points. Posting meeting documents for February 2021, 35 points. And allowing public comments during meetings, 15 points. The scores were assigned as follows. If you got a little bit of a mark, you got 100. If you got 15 points taken off, you got a B. If you got 30 points taken off, a C, and 35 points taken off, a D. And you got an F if you got less than 65. According to the results, Garden City was deficient on the third point. So we had 35 points taken off and received 65. We believe that the report's focus on the website posting of all BOT backup material is misplaced. Documentation is rarely identifiable as being of broad interest, such as the recent police reform plan, items on St. Paul's, items on the water, have all been placed on the village's website. All other backup material, such as contracts and so forth, have always been available through foil. We are not aware of any court ruling or practices to be violation of the law. Nevertheless, we have referred decision of double availability of putting things on the website and on the foil to our council, and it's currently reviewing the process. To be clear, there were no issues raised on the topic of private meetings, as you may be led to believe. This is purely a documentation issue. We're sure there's going to be critics out there. They're going to look to distort the narrative and to support their argument that the village is not being transparent. So again, this is purely a documentation issue and not an issue of private meetings.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or statements by the trustees?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to bring up a point. I'd like to bring to this board and open up, reopen the conversation on moving the polling place next Tuesday from Village Hall to the gym at St. Paul's. We were aware of COVID conditions and municipalities have struggled with how to get through elections and space out properly so people all have access. But since then, we've become aware of an overwhelming response from our citizens who'd like to, who'd like to vote. And you can vote absentee as well as in person. Our village lobby is extremely small for the response that we all know and have seen in the newspaper. Plus that day, there will be inclement weather. It's being projected for. So even if we put up tents, it will be difficult for residents to stand out in the rain. So I don't know if I can ask council or if we can reopen that conversation of moving it from Village Hall to the St. Paul's gym. And if we can't, I'd like specific reasons why. If we were to have a broken pipe, we would have to move it. So now we have, we have these other conditions that affect us just as much, and I'd like to see what we can do about it.
They have had, we have had voting there before.
Yes, Mayor, I, I would not recommend that it lightly be moved. It has already been published in the newspapers as to where the election will be held, and it would be unfortunate if citizens were either confused by a subsequent announcement or came to the first location and then had to travel again. That's on the one side. The other side of that coin is whether or not the village elections commissioner assesses, as best she can, whether the likely turnout, based on the various things that have occurred in her office over the last few weeks, does she assess that there would be a crowd in a COVID situation? And that-- and that public safety and the enhancement of voting rights would dictate that we move to St. Paul's? So it is a balancing of judgment here. What are the priorities of the board? How does the board see fit to deal with it? So as I said, I would not casually or lightly make the change, since it has already been published. Having said that, I think the goal is to maximize the number of voters and maximize their safety when voting. So that becomes this board's decision. As was said by trustee Foley, if there, you know, were an unfortunate accident at Village Hall and the ceiling collapsed or a pipe broke, or, you know, it's always possible that there's a need to change the location. It's just, you know, unfortunate to do it at the last minute, and it's unfortunate to have to do it at all.
Can I ask a question?
There may be priority reasons for doing so.
Can I ask a question? Is it because we've already advertised being at Town Hall, is there, are we in any violation if we move it now? Is it?
Well, the law indicates that you're supposed to announce the location in advance, but certainly it does happen that there are situations arise where the planned location becomes unusable. And if this board were to decide that because of the advancing storm, the COVID virus still being with us, and the need to maximize a larger-than-anticipated turnout, the board could make that judgment call.
The other, the other thing I could suggest is the money that we were gonna spend on a tent. You could, if somebody wasn't able to make the trip, or didn't want to go to two places, or drive to one place and park and deal with parking in another, we can run a shuttle bus and bring them over and bring them back.
Isn't this the place that we usually use for voting? We use that field house, isn't it Field House?
Yes, it's not, I, I don't think the issue is, is it a unique place for us to hold the election? It's just that we were, we were, we were planning out here. We just heard that, you know, we, we, we got a D on some tests because we didn't post a few documents on the website. I just want to make sure, like, you know, if we say, hey, we should move it over to St. Paul's, that we don't get somehow, you know, we're in breach of something, or.
Well, again, the law dictates that you should hold the election where you said you were gonna hold the election. But the law contemplates that there are always exceptional circumstances that can arise.
Let me ask, let me ask another question, which may justify the answer whether or not we move it.
Karen, how many, how many ballots have we processed so far?
We have processed about 2,500 absentee ballot applications.
And before the court of murmurs, how many usual total votes do we get in an election? And, and any of you here?
300, maybe.
Okay, I think we have a pretty good reason to move it to St. Paul's, as Colleen said, just by pure volume. But, I don't know, I guess.
Well, we, we can reach out to the newspaper and see if we've missed the deadline. We have a website, we have this meeting which is being scheduled.
I, I'm, I don't think it's crazy to move it over there, I think it's fine. I just, I, like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to end up getting, you know, somehow penalized.
It's very close, and we could just have a couple of people standing to do that, and we'll get a few people who made mistakes on that day to direct them over to the.
Well, again, we can easily direct the residents there. My question would be for Karen. Karen, if we were to move it to, uh, where?
Fluid Hall.
To, to.
Not, not Fluid.
No, 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 to the, to the Field House. If we moved it to the Field House, is that doable at, at this time?
I will do whatever the board decides to do, but I recommend that we keep it at Village Hall. We had it in September, the COVID was worse then. A lot of people have been vaccinated. We're getting a lot of absentee ballot voters. I don't feel we will have a lot coming in that day. People don't want to come out to vote, for whatever reason, now more than in September, I don't know why. We have the machines already being delivered here. I would have to get in touch with, they're probably being delivered tomorrow. We don't want to move them, they've already been certified by the Board of Elections that they're coming here. I don't know if that's an issue.
I think it's all into it.
Karen, let me also ask you a question. Did we not also increase the number of voting machines?
I increased the number of voting machines.
And, and in addition to that, we also have a tent, and then we're also going to have chairs inside the tent?
I have already rented the tent, I can cancel that now, without.
Before we go into further, can I ask, what's the status of the bathrooms in the Field House? Is that, are they up in operation?
They are, but they're inadequate.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if people actually.
We held, we held a presidential election there with the Field House.
No, I, I understand, I, I understand, I understand this, Colleen, but we're sitting here on Thursday. We're talking about having an election in four days. We're talking that every single thing has been organized and put together with everyone who's involved in this entire process. And now, four days before the election, we're now gonna take this and move this to the Field House. I agree with you, it's a larger space or whatever, but Karen, with all the people involved, has been working on this for the last probably two months. And four days before this, now to totally change and move everything. Plus, in addition to that, there's no way that we could sit there and we could notify all of our residents at this point.
Well, I.
There's just no way it can be done.
I respectfully disagree. I mean, I appreciate the work that Mrs. Altman's done, but nothing is insurmountable. And we could make those arrangements if we had to. And making those arrangements to the Field House would give voters here more opportunity to not stand in the rain and be able to vote.
There, there is an issue, an outstanding issue, which I don't think is being resolved 100% yet. There was a sewer backup that affected Fluid Hall, the Field House, and the conference station. The conference station is on its own line, that's been cleared. But I think the Field House and Fluid Hall are still, the toilet facilities are not functioning 100%. I don't know if they'll be ready by Tuesday.
Yeah, we, we can't, we can't make this change now. We can't make this change now. What's the capacity? What's the capacity of this building? I mean, if, if, again, anticipating the turnout that we're anticipating, how many people did we?
That's a Josie H. question, I'm not quite sure. But I think, I think the social distancing kind of trumps everything.
Well, not only that too, but I mean, Karen has also arranged it to where none of the employees will be parking in the lot. The lot will be totally open for people who, who come in to vote, so they can park there. We have a tent which is gonna be set up to, so they're not gonna be exposed to the elements. We have chairs inside that will be there, so that this way, if they have to wait for any period of time, they don't have, for the people who need it, they don't have to stand. We, we've got all of the electors, we've got all the machines, we've got everything else organized. We, we can't change this at this point, I, I understand your point, but this is, this is, this would be chaotic.
Can I ask a question? Could we extend?
This should have been, this should have been suggested weeks ago, we can't do this stuff.
We did bring it up, so we're revisiting it now.
Can we start a little earlier, or something like that? Can we start voting at 10:00 instead of?
No, it's already been posted, you have nine hours.
No, no, I know, but surely, that, surely it's easier at this point if we wanted to just give some more time to alleviate any crowding. Is there anything about advertising or posting the hours that would preclude us from starting at 10:00 instead of 12:00, or something like that?
Well, again, the law dictates the election should be held where and when it has been posted for. The board has the authority by resolution to set the hours of the election. If they did so, and you would be changing that resolution in a timeframe that doesn't readily allow itself to be published to the public. Now, I also note that this year, it's not just a matter of the voters. Keep in mind that there are beginning to be poll watchers, as well as inspectors for each of the machines. There, there will be a number of people stationed right at the polling site for the full day, in all likelihood. So again, it's up to the board to do, but there do seem to be reasons both to leave it where it is and reasons to move it.
Can, can I ask a question, Mrs. Altman? How many people do you expect to let into the area that's been designated downstairs at one time?
Well, they would come in, and we would probably allow four people in. They, they go to different tables, so you really can't say, there could be one at each table.
We could, we could have four, 10.
Could be 12, because then they each go to a machine, and then they'll be exiting the building.
So, so less than 10?
No, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a flow of people. You're gonna have people coming in, they're registered, they're registered, when they're registered, then they get the thing to vote. They go over to a different place to vote, someone else is coming to register.
Just evolve, but I understand. So if we have 1,000 voters show up, that's, that's over 100 an hour?
If that's what hap, yes, that would be.
So is it likely, in your opinion, that we can service over 100 an hour?
Yes.
It's hard to tell, because if you have two people that are waiting at the AC table, and it, it's hard to say, I can't.
Whereas if we moved it to the Field House, we wouldn't have that problem.
You wouldn't have the problem, but I don't know about, there's issues with the machine and the.
Again, I, I know there's extraordinary circumstances, I'm just looking for people's opportunity to vote smoothly.
Okay, I understand.
And again, Mrs. Foley, the other thing about this is, is that if you moved it to, if you moved it to the Field House, you still only have four machines. So what ends up happening is that people come there, again, what you're talking about, you're talking about a flow. You're not talking about people who are staying, uh, uh, four people walk in the door, and they go to register. So they go to their tables, they get approved. Then they turn around, they get their ballot, they go over to the tables, they get the ballot. From the ballot, they then turn around and move. And what ends up happening is, is that, so those four people who registered, they're now doing their ballot, another four people come and register. Then those, the first four, then they're gonna go submit the ballot, the next four are gonna go to vote. So what happens is, you actually have a flow. Within an hour, you can easily handle 100 people, because you have a flow of constantly four people going through and through and through and through. So you're making it sound like four people can go in, they have to go through the whole process, and then we just let another four people.
I do think there'll be a bottleneck, and that's the reason for the tent.
Right, I think it's, it's less about how many people are voting in an hour, it's who's waiting around in the hour.
Exactly, and so it.
I think that's, I think either way, anywhere we put it, people are, the same amount of people are gonna vote, let's be honest. The issue is the accommodations for people waiting. Would probably be easier in the Field House than it would be here in a tent. And I just looked at the weather, it says it's gonna, it is gonna be something.
60% chance of rain.
So, listen, I, you know, I, sorry, my mic's not on. I understand, I understand that there's, there's some issues, but I don't think it's about processing votes. I think it's about just the overall experience for people, it might be more uncomfortable here than it is at the Field House. I, I get what, what trustee Foley's saying. I mean, the issue is, logistically, getting it all there at this time is tough. So that's why I asked, could we extend the hours, maybe we start a little earlier? That way, we can, instead of doing 100 an hour, maybe if we start a little early, it's 80 an hour, or something like that, and there's less of a likelihood of a lineup outside. That's the only thing. But a last-minute change of hours seems maybe easier than a change of rate.
Yeah, we did talk about it a month ago, and I'm bringing it up again.
We didn't do anything a month ago.
I, I think the volume of votes is maybe, that's come in, has changed a few, or at least brought some things to light, is all, that's all. Just a lot of volume of votes, there's a lot of interest in the election, so, which by the way, is a great thing. But we should just figure out, you know, what, what between, you know, what's, what's good for, you know, the commitments we make to machines and to deliveries, and logistically, would there be expense now in changing everything?
Well, I don't think we would lose the money for the tent unless we still need it by the Field House. I don't know that we would need it.
Right.
I don't know if I could cancel at this date, and I have to find out if my inspectors could even come that early. They get paid, they don't get paid a lot of money to work from noon to nine as it is.
Right.
So they're committed to that time, and I can't have an election without my inspectors. So unless they all show up, if they all show up, it's, it's not an issue.
In addition, at this year, you also have two parties, you have two parties that are, that are going for the positions. They're gonna have their observers, they're gonna have their people. Like I said, I just, you know, I know we had this discussion before, but we made a decision. We, we can't sit here now and change the election four days before the election. This, this, this would, this would be chaotic, it would, it would cause an issue or problem wherever. You know, I mean, Karen Altman has been working on this thing for months. She's worked out all the details, she's worked out everything else. If we have a volume of people, great, we, we basically have everything set up, and, and things will be set up, and, and they'll be able to flow through. I've seen numerous elections that have occurred in the, in, in the, in Village Hall, and Mrs. Altman has been on top of this. To, to sit there and change this, not to mention the, the point that Ralph just mentioned as far as with the sewer issues over at the, at the Field House. I, we, this, you know, this can't be done. And again, yes, we had this discussion a month ago, but we decided no, to keep it there.
No, I know, we didn't have 2,000.
Right, there's been some changes in.
Can I just ask about the sewage thing? Because it could be all.
That's fine.
So are the bathrooms unworkable?
What's going on there?
So the, what we understand, we've had citywide here three times at least, I didn't follow up on it today. But the sewer lines for Fluid Hall and Field House, they seem to flow through the St. Paul's building. There's a clap somewhere, and locating is difficult. We think it's in the vicinity of the old Ellis Hall, but we can't just start digging up everywhere looking for it. So we're trying to research and find out where it might be. We have some old blueprints, Josie H. looked at, but I don't think they honed that in. Then, then we had the conference station go down, but it's a separate line, that was cleared. We really need to disconnect them from that old line, put a new line out to Stewart Avenue.
We can't do this.
Mr. Swazik, can I ask a question? So, are you, are you telling this board that the bathrooms are closed and unworkable?
Yes. At the last report, at the last report I had.
So we do not run programs in the Field House with unworkable bathrooms?
They are, the, the people who are participating, I understand, is not there, whoever's been nice, they're going after the conference station.
Oh, so there is, there is a bathroom available?
The conference station's, the separate unit by the playground is functional.
So, so there is bathroom facilities at the Field House?
At the conference.
At the conference station, so someone could use the conference station and go in the Field House.
So now you want the people who are working there, the people who organize, you're, you're, you're sitting there talking about potential inclement weather. So now you want them to walk through the inclement weather to use the bathroom facilities?
Wow, that's great.
Okay, really? Let's just simply vote, we, we can talk about this for 20 minutes, but my decision is leave it where it is.
My decision is move it.
Okay. I'd say we move it where it is.
Trustee Foley has made a motion to change the location, is there a second?
I mean, a second is just a vote, isn't it?
Right, there's a second on the motion. All those in favor of moving the location signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I hear no.
No, I, I was thinking about, but I'm not gonna vote for if the bathrooms are broken. I can just imagine my mom trying to like walk across the parking lot, and I just.
All those opposed, say nay.
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 I believe the nays have it with one vote in favor. Mayor, if we go back to the agenda, I note that there has not yet been a motion on the consent calendar.
We have to, we have to.
Yes, it's going on Agenda Item.
Agenda item.
All right, can we move to Citizens' comments on Agenda Item only? Are there any speakers?
It's like Steve Alardi. Was, was the voting just on the, was that part of the agenda?
No. Was the voting part of the agenda?
No.
No.
Because just so you know, there's 18,000 voters in town that are registered. And I expect that another, probably 2,500 of absentee ballots between now. You're gonna have a ton of voters, so just be aware of that if you're keeping it at Village Hall.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
It is 18,000 registered voters.
Steve Alardi has his hand up.
Next speaker.
Yeah, hi, this is Steve Alardi, can you hear me?
Yes.
On item number two with the catch basins at St. James, is that to alleviate the flooding that occurs on the corner of Washington and St. James? Or is that going to be a separately addressed issue?
No, I believe this is to alleviate the flooding that occurs. You know, we, we have, most catch basin work is done by the highway crew year-round. But when we do road construction and the cage basin has a problem, they haven't gotten to yet. It's included in the road paving project for that road. So this is, this has been engineered to take care of that.
Okay, because both corners on the north and the south side of the east side of St. James and Washington have severe flood.
It was, it was pointed out, I'm not sure, it's yourself or Mr. Hogan, the prior president, but it was pointed out. It was investigated while, after a heavy rainstorm, it was designed after that observation.
Okay, great.
I don't have the design in front of me, but I'm sure they were thorough.
It, it is supposed to take care of that, Steve.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this period on the agenda only?
Yeah, um, mayor, just wondering, can we get a crossing guard for parking? Because the line next to the Village Hall would not accommodate all the voters. If they'll have to park across the street, do you think it might be a good safety piece to add a crossing guard?
Hey, Tom, that's not an agenda item, but we can do it during open comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, just for consideration, sorry, I'm gonna.
Next speaker. No further speakers?
On the agenda item, no.
All right. All right, then we'll move along to approved minutes. Of the February 23rd, 2021, and February 25th, 2021, a special board meeting. I have a motion to pass that.
I'm voting.
Trustee Delaney?
Trustee Delaney, and a second please. Trustee Foley, and all those in favor.
Aye.
And now we are going to move along to, uh, approve the consent calendar. We have a motion for that, please. Trustee Delaney, and a, a second, Trustee Foley, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Now we are up to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers? Any speakers for non-agenda items? Okay, in that case, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Trustee Menudo.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Excuse me?
Can you hear me? This is George Salem. Can you hear me?
Yes, George, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, I'd like, I'd like to, uh, uh, observe that the voting volume is gonna be very high on Tuesday. I wonder that, whether we're gonna have such a high volume and it's a very contested election that we might have in some instances too close to call outcomes. Are there rules in place to trigger recounts in cases of very close results? And what are those rules and criteria?
The answer is, yes, there are such rules in place under state law. I, I don't have them in front of me, but there are percentages where the margin of victory is sufficiently small, then a double check is made of the count.
But correct me if I'm wrong too, guys, there's gonna be, uh, like, election observers there to make sure also that, you know, all the.
That is anticipated, yes.
Yeah, so, I think it's, I mean, this is a state law thing though, right, in terms of recount triggers?
That is correct.
So we don't make that up. It's out to this board. It's a state law.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's great.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question that I asked earlier. Is this okay? Tom O'Brien?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I just, uh, just precautionary in case the lot is full next to Village Hall. Could I ask the board to approve a crossing guard just to save if people crossing from the parking lot behind the store?
Can we have this?
It might, it might actually be.
There are actually, there are actually, uh, be police officers there, Mr. O'Brien. So they're gonna have, they're gonna have several police officers who will be there, not only for the residents who may have to cross the street, but in addition to the residents who will be parking in the lot and walking into, uh, Village Hall. And as I stated before, uh, Mrs., um, uh, Altman has already made arrangements that none of Village employees will be parking in the lot. The lot will be empty, so that this way, when individuals come, they can eas, it can easily handle, I don't know, how many cars fit in there? Fifty? I don't know how many, there's probably forty or fifty vehicles, so people will be able to come and go, but we will have, uh, police officers there, and that's already been arranged.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Uh, Mayor, it's Don McLeod, Ten Westford Road.
Go ahead.
Uh, I have been asking, uh, per our election lawyer, through Karen Altman, we were told we would get written directions on how the village will canvass the votes. Uh, we are, we've been asking for this about two weeks now. We're three days away from the election. We told, we've been told repeatedly that Peter B. would have had them to us by Monday or Tuesday. I was in there today. We still do not have written directions for how the village will canvass the votes.
The instructions to the inspectors as to how they count votes, and in this particular instance, I think we're talking about absentee ballots, are, um, are being prepared by our office, but they're not distributed to the public. They're distributed to the inspectors of election. Uh, while I don't have any particular.
Are they all distributed, are they distributed to the poll watchers?
While I don't have any particular objections to releasing them to anybody who wanted to read them, they're really.
Well, that's, that's great, because we've been asking them for two weeks now, Mr. B.
It would be helpful if we could take turns, Don, so just bear with me for a second. Uh, the instructions are available, will be available for the inspectors. And as I said, I don't have any particular objection to anybody else who wanted to see them. But, uh, they are not designed for advanced release to the public. They're just helpful guides to the inspectors themselves. So the parties can also be free to consult with their attorneys, who.
But, yeah, Mr. B., and I know you spoke into our election lawyer, per the poll watchers.
Mr. McLeod, one person at a time.
Again.
I believe it's done, Miss Trustee Foley.
No, I'm not.
I apologize then, but thank you for the correction, Mrs. Foley.
Uh, in, in any case, my, my apologies. It sounds like we're some, to some degree interrupting each other, Don, which was not my intention. But, um, I would also assume that at this point, I'm aware that, uh, both sides, for lack of, lack of a better term, have consulted with counsel. And I suspect that, uh, they will each wanna turn to their respective counsel for guidance on, uh, what they should object to or what they should be consenting to. And I think they, I will also prefer to leave that to the each side and each candidate to consult with their own candidate, uh, with their own counsel. Uh, thank you. Don, I'm, I'm done at this point now.
Thank you very much, and I apologize if there's a lag here and I interrupted you, which was pointed out by the trustee. Are, are those written directions for canvassing going to be available for the poll watchers? I understand our counsel has advised, but the village also produces written directions for how the votes are going to be canvassing. That's what I'm looking for.
It is not my call, Don, as to whether or not that document would be released to poll watchers. What I will be doing is preparing that document as a guidance document, which I will apply to the village clerk as the election commissioner. And she will distribute it to the inspectors. If, if there's a request made, I would defer to the village clerk as to whether that document is made available outside of the inspectors. As counsel, I have no particular objection to doing so, but it's just simply not my call to make.
Uh, are you done? Anyone to interrupt?
Yes, I am.
I, I have asked the village clerk, who has said she will release them, she, as late as three o'clock today. She is waiting on you to produce that memo for her.
That's right.
I believe she's here, and if I'm incorrect, I would just like to know. Uh, and I apologize if I incorrect. That is my understanding.
Mr. McLeod, as I spoke with you this afternoon, Peter B.'s office is working on them. It is not a document that we do every year. I know this is an unusual election. But Steve Martier of his office is working on them. And when he has them prepared and ready, I spoke to him again today on my way home from work. And he said he is working on them, and he will try to get them to me tomorrow. That, I reiterate what I, I keep saying to you, as soon as we get them, I'm not holding them in my office. I'm not holding them back from anybody. When we have them, we will send them out to the inspectors, and if anybody else on the other side would like them, we will give them to you. But I, it's not that I'm holding them and not giving them to you or sharing them.
I, 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 I'm sorry.
I don't have them. When I have them, I will get them to you.
I, Karen, you've been nothing more than one hundred percent helpful. I was just trying to find out, like, a facility and find out when you would get them. Thank you for your efforts. I will try to drop by tomorrow. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I will let you know when, when we have them, and you're certainly welcome to. I'll scan them to you, and if anybody else would like them.
Great, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor, it's Tom O'Brien. Can I have one more question?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Karen, thanks, you've, you've been doing a yeoman's effort with this overwhelming, you know, all the overwhelming, uh, absentee ballot ballots coming in. I was just wondering, with the amount coming in every day, do you have enough help to, to sort through it all, because?
Yes.
I know you're working so hard.
Yes.
I do have enough help. I have, uh, very good staff. And I have a lot of people from other departments that are helping us and pitching in every day.
I will say that in discussing how, um, Karen's week has been going, she did remark to me and others, and I hope I'm okay in saying this. Karen does a phenomenal job, and she'll do an even better job if you're courteous and, and would extend to her the respect you would to any one of your friends and family who is in this position right now. It's very, there's a lot of work to do. She's doing the best job she can, I'm sure of that. And, uh, if there's anything, she's probably too shy to say it, but how about we all are real courteous to her, especially down the stretch? I know everyone's real amped up about the election, but just remember that there's a person, a real person here, who, uh, who's doing her best. All right? That's all I'd like to say about that.
Yeah, well, I, I second that. This is Tom. I second that Karen knows, I've been communicating with her, how appreciative I am of her, right, Karen?
Yes, you have been. Thank you.
Yeah, and, uh, I was just wondering also, and I don't know the answer to this, how many people actually will be counting the votes with all the votes coming out? Just curious.
Right now, I have six inspectors, and they will begin the counting when the polls are closed. I am thinking about calling in another one or two alternates. I also have a translator. She will not be counting the ballots, but she will help with crowd control, and we have to clean and disinfect the machines every thirty minutes. So I am thinking about calling up another one or two inspectors, uh, tomorrow to see if they're available.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, guys, for all your great work.
You're welcome. Any further speakers? In that event, I do believe the meeting has come to an end. Yes?
What's your name, ladies?
I wish to, uh, all right, end the moti, uh, the meeting, uh, Mr. Delaney and, uh, Trustee Menudo, and everyone say aye.
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 Have a lovely evening.